Participants who are taking part in the meeting but are not members of the board. The board is now going to break out into closed session. We will conduct our closed session and we'll come right back to this forum. So if you'd like to see the rest of the meeting, just stay where you are. The board will reconvene from closed session in just a just a little while. Okay, let the record reflect, we are now in closed session. For the moderator, please move us to a to a closed session meeting.
Take the point brush off your head. Look up, put your hair back, shave your hairs on.
The teacher muted you. She wants you to be. But then you can't hear. You're supposed to be muted. She muted you, which means you're supposed to be muted.
We have everyone back. Let the record reflect that the Board of Education has now adjourned from the closed meeting. We are on the review and approval of human resources item. I'm looking for a motion for the board to approve the human resources items as presented. What's your motion?
Oh, move.
Move by Dr. Weaver, is there support? Members of the board, be mindful that your microphones are off unless you turn them on. Is there support? Support by Mr. Neal. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Walker? Must be. I saw her mouth move, says yes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
No.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Medell? I didn't hear anything.
That's because I'm, like I said, I'm conflicted. I'm thinking, yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, I got your yes. And President Cox?
I also vote yes.
Six yea, one nay.
The next item on this evening's agenda is 562.20, which is review and approval of the business service and finance items. Mrs. Simmons?
Right, thank you, Mr. President. If you would turn to page 20 of the board packet. This is the recommendation of furnishings for the William D. Ford Career Tech Center, and I'm asking for a motion to approve these items. These are for the interior environment, office supply. The total award recommendation amount is $149,935.59. and this will all be charged to the bond fund.
So moved.
Motion by Shawna Walker, support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver, is there discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
I, I support this. I'm just, my question is, shouldn't the building be up and then we buy furniture for it? I'm not, I'm not sure about what the thinking is in terms of buying the furniture now.
And I know that Tony Spiezzak is in the meeting, I believe I saw him.
Unmute your mic, Tony. Thank you.
Hi, Tony.
Good evening.
Did you hear Dr. Weaver's comment regarding purchasing and where we're going to put it?
I did. The furnishing is for the new addition at Ford Career Technical Center and the new banquet hall. If we don't purchase it now, we will not have it for when school starts in the fall.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yeah.
Seven yay.
Thank you, and thank you, Tony. The next item on our agenda, five six three point two zero, is the Head Start Monthly Report. This is Madell.
As required by federal law, all board trustees receive copies of the Wayne Metro Head Start Program Report for the months of October and November at their place this evening. What I also want to tell you is that they are working hard to communicate with their students during this, knowing that not all students have a computer at this age of preschool age and or have access, and they are making phone calls and trying to make, reach out and provide education for all of our Head Start students at this time.
Move takes up Mrs. Madell's report.
Move by Mrs. Walker, support by Mrs. Heinz. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Neal?
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr., President Cox?
Yes.
Seven yay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Neal. The next item on our agenda, five six four point two zero, is the Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Thursday, we had a board study session and I provided an update on COVID-19 issues and how the district is addressing them, and I'm just going to run through that again briefly. As you are aware, Governor Whitmer issued Executive Order twenty twenty dash thirty-five on April second. She suspended face-to-face instruction for the remainder of the nineteen-twenty school year. This does not translate into school ending for the year, but it did mean that we had to take a different look at how instruction would look going forward in Wayne Westland through June. As a requirement of the executive order, a continuity of learning plan had to be developed, submitted for approval, and implemented no later than April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Our curriculum and instruction department, under the leadership of Jen Curry, with input from various stakeholders and departments, completed and submitted our plan to Wayne RISA on April fourteenth. Dr. Leapa approved the plan, and it began Friday, April seventeenth. The district plans to use a hybrid model of instruction using hard copy instructional packets and having learning materials available online. Students who do not have internet access will have access to instructional materials through a weekly instructional packet. All students will have access to grade level and course learning documents as needed to complete their work. All stakeholders will also have access to the Continued Learning Plan Hub, which is posted on our district's website. All district employees continue to receive pay and benefits, as outlined in their collective bargaining agreements. We are encouraging staff to work remotely to the extent possible, and per the executive order, some staff may be redeployed to perform essential work that doesn't fall within their normal scope of work, such as food distribution. When required to work offsite or onsite, staff must complete a wellness check and abide by social distancing guidelines, and we are distributing personal protective equipment, such as masks and gloves. The executive order has also mandated that districts continue with food distribution to qualifying students. Wayne Westline Community Schools will continue to utilize our current weekly drive-through food distribution process through May fourth. Those currently take place at John Glenn High School on Mondays from ten until one, or until the food is gone. We will transition to our summer feeding program located in schools throughout the district once the stay-at-home order has been lifted, and it is safe to resume those activities where groups of people are congregated in one place. All field trips and out-of-state and country travel have been canceled. Principals will share information with families related to any refunds and/or rescheduling that may take place. Prom and graduation ceremonies have not been canceled. We are awaiting further guidance and direction from the governor and the CDC. These events are currently scheduled for the end of May, early June, and we will provide you with further information as it becomes available. The community will not have access to our buildings until the stay-at-home order has been lifted, and once safe to do so, notice will be sent out to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons. Next item on our agenda are citizens' comments on non-agenda items. This is the portion of the meeting that you can address the board on any item that you choose. Does anybody wish to adjust, address the Board of Education? Anyone in the audience? Is the moderator looking for raised hands? I don't see any. Okay, the next item on the agenda is review and recommendations of the members of the Board of Education. Ms. Heinz?
Yes, thank you all for coming out tonight. This is very interesting, new technology, state-of-the-art twenty twenty. So thank you guys for taking the time out today. Like I said, next year is going to be an amazing year. We have a lot of things coming ahead of us. We have like the closure of one of the schools. Trying to make sure everything, you know, kind of gets back together, because I feel really bad for the seniors of this year, because they really haven't been able to experience like the prom and graduations, and they've really lost a lot. So I'd like to make sure everybody is safe, definitely stay in your house. And I really thank Jill and all the other staff members for being able to provide the food for the students, really making sure that they do have some type of educational plan while they're at home. So thank you guys so much for developing those plans for our children.
Thank you, Melanie. Mrs. Madell?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank our tech team for getting us to this point where we can communicate with each other and continue the business of the school district. I really appreciate this. It's a little bit of a learning curve for some of us, and hopefully this will work better. In fact, I'm enjoying not having to leave the house, I really am. I am so appreciative of all the volunteers that I see out there each week on the food distribution line, giving up of their time and effort, and everybody, even though they've got a mask on, or I should say, most people have a mask on, Jill, and making sure that people are greeted. Our customer service is coming across, that they're happy to be out there and helping to serve our students. I am so impressed with the food that is coming to the students also, that it isn't junk food, that it is quality, healthy foods that are coming. I'm also very appreciative to the curriculum department for putting those educational packets together each week to be handed out and transported to the students, because we need to do a very good job of keeping them in contact so they do not lose as much during this time as they would during the summer normally. So all I can say is to everybody, you are doing a great job and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. The student meals, all of the people that work so hard to prepare them and then show up on Mondays to, to hand them out. I can't say enough good about the work that you folks are doing. Thank you so very, very much. I know our students appreciate that. And the same goes for those people who prepare the learning packets for our students. Some of our students are receiving instruction online, but packets, learning packets are available to all of our students as well, and it's my understanding that they're being handed out on a Monday along with the food. The, the plan that was submitted to Dr. Leapa at RISA was very, very detailed. Great deal of work went into developing that, that particular plan. I think it was submitted on a Thursday, and on a Friday, we began doing the preparation for those learning packets, and they were ready to go the following Monday, so that was fantastic. And then Mrs. Madell said that the learning curve was a little tougher for some people than for others. I can't tell you how much I appreciate our technology department for getting me, and I suspect that some other people, up and available for this meeting today. It, it really has been something. And ultimately, our thanks go to Jill Simmons for the outstanding leadership she's given us at a time when, when we really do need some thinking outside the box. I like to, I hate to do this, but I want in on a bit of a downer with the, with the spending that the state is doing in all areas because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We can anticipate that our budget as a school district is going to be negatively impacted for the coming school year. We need to be aware of that at this point and thoughtful of it for the remainder of the school year. And that's for me, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Mrs. Walker?
Hi, I just want to say to everyone, just continue to be safe. Please, in the effort to still take care of our children and our families in the district, just make sure that you're, you're following all the procedures, and please just stay as safe as you can and be careful. Everything that's going on has, has really touched and had some impact on me personally, and so I don't want to see any of us not be able to make it back to our meetings. So that's all I want to say is just stay safe, and I guess we'll see each other tomorrow, right?
Yes, thank you so much, Shawna. Mr. Neal?
I want to say I'm, I'm very happy with the way the meeting has flowed and how, how well it went today. And wanted to add that I, I believe, despite the fact that we're sending out educational packages and we have training online, I believe that parents will find a renewed appreciation for teachers, because as my daughter explained to me, who has six children in six different grades, she's going crazy. She wants to graduate them all from high school next week, just so she doesn't have to continue on. She says that it's a very difficult thing, and I, and I do appreciate what parents have to go through in, in order to make that happen. It's got to be difficult.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and to the community. I'd just like to say one thing. We have seen in the media, we've seen sometimes upside of hospitals, that heroes work here, and that certainly is true. But I want our community to know that that sign should also be put up at, in Wayne Westland, because truly, with the, with the food distribution, everything that's going on, heroes work in Wayne Westland, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you, President Cox.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Kind of to mirror what you've just said, I, I previously talked about our wonderful interim superintendent, Jill Simmons, and how much I appreciate her professionalism and her focus, and this, the step up has been amazing, as it has been with so many members of the staff that I can see right now. One, one person that I never mentioned is Tamara Phoenix. And Tamara Phoenix, for those who don't know, is she, she's the secretary for the Board of Education, so she's kind of the funnel for everything that goes back and forth from the administration and the board, and she's done, she's done a great job, and Tamara, I just want you to know that I appreciate that. I know, I know how focused you are, and, and we appreciate what you do. As you know, of course, the Board of Education has completed all of the first round interviews for our superintendent search. And the process itself was supposed to culminate on the thirtieth of April with the board meeting to make a decision as to who our next superintendent would be. COVID-19 and the shutdown of the schools have put a stop to all of that. But the board, the governor's decision to allow us to have a meeting virtually online, as we're having right now, allows us to, to pick that back up. And the board determined that it was in our best interest as a school district to continue the business of the district, and a major portion of that business is to set a new superintendent. Therefore, the search process will resume tomorrow evening, the twenty-first, at seven PM. We will interview two finalists for the position. These interviews are open to the public via this platform, Zoom platform, and if you check the district website, you'll be able to click in and log into that meeting. Participants will also be provided with an email address that is going to be set aside just for this purpose. The address is soupsearch@wwcst.net. That will be advertised on our webpage. The participants will be able to provide the Board of Education with their comments and thoughts prior to us making a decision, which is scheduled currently for Monday, May the fourth, our next meeting. So with that, I, I thank everyone, both Board of Education members and participants for taking part in this virtual meeting. We appreciate your support of our school district and its efforts going forward. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Weaver, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Heinz, roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
And President Cox?
My vote, yes, we are also, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.